Public City Council to order. Ann, please call the roll.
Ms. Saleh.
Here.
Mr. Lecliter.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Ms. Aludo.
Here.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Amoros-Grooms.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance. Chris, could you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely, thank you. I'll pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special presentation, the MORPSY 2016 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Amelia? Dana?
Good evening. My name's Amelia. I'm a principal planner at the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, and I'm here tonight to give you a brief presentation on something called the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And what I'm asking of you is to listen closely, and then you have packets at your seats that you can look at later, and on your personal computers, you can take a look at what I'm sharing with you, provide your comments that way. So... How many people does it take to get a PowerPoint to work, right?[175.21][175.23][laughter] So, I'm pretty sure you're all familiar with who MORPSY is, but just as a refresher, we are a voluntary association of 60 local governments and some non-government affiliates as well. We focus on issues such as state, federal, and local advocacy for policy issues, different types of energy work regarding sustainability and air quality and home weatherization, planning for land use, economic development, different environmental things like waterways, and then transportation. And that is the reason I'm here to talk to you today. So I'm going to give you this presentation as speedily as I can, and I am going to be asking that you review and comment on a list of things that are listed up there, and you have all these slides in your packet, so I'm not going to belabor it. The Metropolitan Transportation Plan is a long-range plan that's set out to look 20 years ahead to make sure that the money that MORPSY receives from the federal government for major infrastructure improvements that we then allocate to communities such as yours for projects you want to build is economically and fiscally balanced. We only get a certain amount of money from the federal government, and we want to make sure that we are planning to use that money in the most equitable way possible. And we have to do this every four years. Our planning area for the MTP is all of Franklin and Delaware Counties and a little bit of some surrounding communities as well. And the reason that this planning is important in addition to the fiscal perspective is the fact that we have 2,000 miles of highways in central Ohio already. We don't drive as much as people in California, but we still do have to drive pretty far to get where we need to go. And we have a lot of folks using transit and a lot of folks using bikes as well, and we need to make sure that we spend our money wisely. We've been working on this for over a year and a half, and we are near the end there. As you can see, there's only a few more tabs to go on to, but today we have a draft list of strategies and projects, and that is going to be of most interest to you. We have six goals for the MTP, and they relate to all of those different work areas that I mentioned that MORPSY is involved in. And what we did is we had to go out and take a look at all of transportation plans throughout the region. So we looked at Dublin's plans, we looked at Columbus's plans, we looked at Powell's plans, and then all of the other communities in that planning area map I showed you. And we also coordinate with other organizations such as QUOTA. We also incorporated for the first time a separate active transportation plan since biking and walking is becoming more prevalent in central Ohio. And so this is something that's meant to be a tool for you and your staff to use to make sure you're considering people who are walking and biking and using transit, not only for recreation, but also for actual modes of getting places. The Active Transportation Plan has this really cool interactive web map, so if you're at a meeting, you can pull up your phone or your iPad and say, hey, we're looking to do a project. You know, we have a developer coming into town, for example. Let's take a look and show them this map and see where the key corridors for active transportation are, and see if we can work with them to make sure people can walk and bike easily. So this is what you will see when you go to the MTP website. You'll see a map with a lot of lines and dots on it, and you can zoom into Dublin, and so it'll clear up a bit. And you can take a look at all of the different projects that all of those community plans included for transportation improvements over the next 20 years. So these are major improvements. It's not filling in potholes. It's building new roads, building new bridges, widening roads, making changes to interchanges, and things like that. So like I said, you'll be able to zoom into Dublin, and you'll see a bunch of lines that are more prominent than others. So for example, here there are a lot of major widenings shown in red, and there are some bicycle and pedestrian projects shown in green. And you'll be able to click on each of those and get more information about them, such as what's the anticipated timeline, what plan did this come from? So for example, did it come from a Metro Parks plan, a Dublin plan, et cetera? And then you can get more information on exactly what it entails. Transit projects are also included on here. There aren't any coming through your area. These are major mass transit projects, so things like light rail and bus rapid transit. So that doesn't mean that things aren't happening around the area. It just means nothing of that caliber. So the next steps, besides you going back later and taking a look at this and providing your input, is to visit us at our open house on March 15th. There'll be another presentation like this and opportunities to walk around and get more detailed information. And we'll be adopting the plan in May. So this is your time, you know, to provide that feedback and think about how this can impact the work that you do here in Dublin. Not to say that all of your transportation projects are funded through the federal government and through MORPSY, but it's a nice way to look at the big picture, the regional picture. Our contact information is up there, and it's in your packets as well. So all of that and more is in this that I handed out to you. And one last thing to note is that this Thursday, from 4:00 to 7:00 at MORPSY, we're having an open house on our bike map update. So for any of you who are interested in bicycling, it's a great way to come in and take a look at the updates we're making to our printed and online bike map. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gustanz. Council, any questions, comments?
Is there any funding for the proposed Scioto River Bike Corridor?
I know that that was one of the projects that was put in as a candidate, and I can't tell you off the top of my head if it's one of the ones that's a draft project. But you'll be able to take a look on that map, and then also in the back here, there's a printed version, and you'll be able to see if anything's allocated for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Proclaimations and special recognitions. It is National Entrepreneurship Week, and before asking Ms. Purba Majumder to come forward, she is president of Cybervation, a company, a local company here in Dublin, I'd invite Jeremiah to step up if you had a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Each year, as you know, our country celebrates National Entrepreneurship Week, and in Dublin, we also take the time to recognize a distinguished entrepreneur that has made plenty of time and investment in our community and continues to do so, and this year is no different. Purba Majumder is the president of Cybervation. I will allow her to tell you a little bit about her company and her story, more importantly, and why we feel she should be recognized for this Entrepreneurship Week proclamation.
Why don't we go through this, and then we'll have her do that? Sure. How are you? Nice to meet you. Step up. Whereas most of the new jobs created throughout the United States in the past decade are in large part a result of the creative efforts of entrepreneurs and small businesses, and whereas Dublin, Ohio was home to over 3,000 businesses and continues to grow, and whereas Dublin companies such as Cybervation Incorporated utilize the resources available in Dublin to grow and prosper and become a crucial part of the city's economy, and whereas entrepreneurs such as Purba Majumder, president of Cybervation Incorporated, not only built her business here in Dublin, but contributes her talents and ideas to help other businesses in the city's thriving business community, and whereas a broad coalition of partner organizations, including the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center, the State of Ohio, and others throughout the United States, are actively engaged in enhancing entrepreneurial opportunities, and whereas encouraging youth to be excited about entrepreneurship and working to expand to the knowledge, skill, and attributes of Dublin's youth and adults to be successful entrepreneurs are critical to the long-term growth of the city of Dublin, the State of Ohio, and the nation, and whereas National Entrepreneurship Week provides an opportunity to focus on the innovative ways in which entrepreneurship brings together the core academic, technical, and problem-solving skills essential for the success of future entrepreneurs and workers. Now therefore, I, Gregory Peterson, Mayor of Dublin, on behalf of the Dublin City Council, do hereby join with our nation in proclaiming February 22nd through 26th, 2016, as National Entrepreneurship Week in the city of Dublin, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the creativity, contributions, and achievements of entrepreneurs in our community, state, and nation. Signed this 22nd day of February, 2016. Congratulations.
Hello, everybody. I want to thank City of Dublin, City Manager, and Mr. Mayor. I am honored to receive this proclamation from the City of Dublin. I'm a proud resident of Dublin for the last nine years, and my business, Cybervation, also is located in Dublin. We have a long relationship with City and the DEC. I was one of the businesses located at the DEC for a couple of years before moving on to my new office in Dublin, and very fortunate to have the support of the City and the DEC in terms of building my business as an entrepreneur. Also, very, very fortunate to have the support of the City in starting Cool Tech Girls, which is a STEM initiative to encourage girls between 4th and 12th grade to pursue STEM careers. All of these couldn't have been possible without the support of City of Dublin, so I'm very, very thankful for everything, and it's just been a wonderful journey together. Thank you.[850.31][851.01][applause]
Thank you very much, ma'am. She's a success story, Dana, right? I mean, that's the point of the DEC and...
Right. We can't thank Purba enough. You know, obviously, congratulations on the success of your business, but the influence that she's had at the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center as a participant, teaching, bringing young women along in the world of technology. Her classes were standing-room only and has had great success at that, so we can't thank you enough for your partnership and continued success in the community, and we hope that you'll continue to be a part of that. We're very proud to have you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Citizen comment, Mr. Jim Richards? Good evening, sir. If you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jim Richards. I live on 7250 Riverside Drive, Dublin, Ohio, 3016. Thank you for allowing me to come this evening to speak to the council and the members. I was born on October 17, 1929, in one of the historic homes on South High Street in Dublin, Ohio, and have lived in this Dublin community for 86 years. I have witnessed this Dublin grow from a small village of some 200 people to a city of several thousand. Through the years, many improvements have enhanced the city of Dublin. There are many people buried in a Dublin cemetery that helped shape this community into a wonderful place to live. Members of my mother's family of Tellers and Shipman were pioneer families during the 1800 period. They chose to live in Dublin and are buried in the Dublin Cemetery. I am here this evening to speak about the Dublin Cemetery, formerly known as the Independent Order of Odd Fellas, number 104 Evening Star Lodge Cemetery. I had the opportunity to be a member and Nobel Grand of this lodge. My interest here this evening is to present a request to the council members for consideration for improving the road surface in the Dublin Cemetery. There were, and our residents of Dublin and surrounding areas, who could not come to the Dublin Cemetery to pay their respect for their loved ones and their friends. There are people with walking disabilities who cannot walk through a gravel surface. My wife was confined to a wheelchair for the last two years of her life. She could not visit my parents or our son's grave because of the gravel stone. She could not attend the memorial service in the month of May. David Cassidy lives on Franklin Street in Dublin. He is the son of Hopalong Cassidy, who won the Heisman Trophy while playing football at the Ohio State University. David is totally disabled and confined to a motorized wheelchair. David lost his mother in 2015, and she is buried in the Dublin Cemetery. He cannot visit his mother's grave because of the gravel road. David loved his mother dearly. A blessing for David would be to visit his mother's grave. David has many friends in Dublin and loves to share conversation with his friends. His basic route to travel is Franklin Street. David does not travel in the heavy-travel streets in Dublin. I know that David would enjoy having access to the Dublin Cemetery if the road had a better-finished surface. I have visited five cemeteries in February 2016. Union Cemetery near Riverside Hospital, Walnut Grove Cemetery in Worthington, Wesley Chapel near Hilliard, Green Line Cemetery in Columbus, and Forest Grove Cemetery in Plain City. All five cemeteries have blacktop roads. When traveling through the city of Dublin, I see many miles of nice blacktop bike paths that children and adults enjoy. The length of the road in the Dublin Cemetery is approximately one mile. The question then becomes, why not blacktop the road surface in the Dublin Cemetery for all people? Thanks to the Dublin employees who are responsible for mowing, digging the graves, snow removal, and other responsibilities, a new blacktop road would eliminate some of the problems due to rain and snow. Thanks to the council for funding the restoration of the memorial stones in the Dublin Cemetery. My great-grandfather, John Teller, served in the Civil War, and his memorial stone was replaced with a new memorial stone due to deterioration. I thank you very much for listening to my request.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richards, for stopping in. Dana?
Well, first of all, I think it's certainly a reasonable request. It's the first time I'd heard of a concern like this. I know that we've always tried to stick to the historic nature of the cemetery. I know had I heard this concern, we would have jumped on that, I think. So I think we would want to take this issue up with the historic society, historical society and so forth, but I certainly think it's certainly a reasonable request and one that we'll take a look at and get back to you with some form of a recommendation. But I'd like to have a little bit of a dialogue with folks. Jim, would you agree we probably should do that? And certainly take that up with them. Happy to do that.
And maybe we can come up with some volunteers or someone to help immediately with these people. I mean, if the access is people getting in to visit these grave sites, maybe we can do something immediately that doesn't involve...
Absolutely. In the interim, if we have that kind of issue, we'll be happy to work with people.
We'll get it addressed, Mr. Richards.
Yeah, we have a van capability that would deal with that. We just, that's a fairly new piece, right?
Yes.
And I think there's potentially a lot of different surfaces that we could utilize in there. Certainly, there may be some historic kind of surfaces that would be hard surfaces that we could at least explore and find out what the kind of costs are going to be. I come from a selfish perspective, because that's where I plan on going myself.
Me too, so...
Nobody's going to visit you, Mike, so don't worry about that.
You're probably right.
Back in 2003 or 2004, I brought this thing up. Robin Lee Rose actually contacted me and asked me and said the exact same thing. There are mobility issues for seniors trying to visit graves, trying to attend memorial services. And it was shot down, and I can't remember why. There was some reasoning that the staff said that so...
I'll check.
I think it's a great idea. I would be supportive, but it's not the first time this has been brought up, but I would definitely be interested in seeing it happen.
Okay.
He's correct.
There's got to be more than one way to solve the problem, too. This community is so full of outpouring of support that even if we had to call to arms to get these people over there, there's got to be a way to...
Yeah, I really regret that I was not aware of that. We would have done some things just like Mike was mentioning to solve that. So we'll work on that and get some information out about that, figure out how we're going to do that. As far as resurfacing, we'll get back to you.
Dana, when you collect that data, could we look at some alternative kind of materials for that, either...
Oh, absolutely.
...colored materials or some things that, you know, make sure that the historical folks know that we want to pursue options that are sensitive to them, but we certainly want to... You know, I see David in his little motorized wheelchair all the time getting around, so certainly want to make that...
And I don't want to suggest that it is the purview of the historical society. I just want to be sensitive to that. You know, we used to have a cemetery commission that is no more, and I know that the staff, you know, and I appreciate Mr. Richards pointing out the love that the staff has of that and the effort that we put down there, but we will get back to you all on this right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. Rose, did you have any additional comment to make? Feel free. You get your five minutes.
Mayor Peterson and council members. Many years ago...
Just your address, please, before we get...
Sorry?
Your address.
Oh, okay. 195 Stone Fence Lane, Dublin, Ohio, 43017.
Thank you, ma'am.
Many years ago, after talking with several Dublin residents and Amy Saleh, Council Member Board Two, I came to City Council to speak about the problem of the cemetery and how difficult it is for the handicapped and elderly to care for their graves of their loved ones and to attend the burials. There have been many fine improvements in Dublin over the past few years, and as a resident, I am very thankful. However, nothing has been done to improve the gravel path or the road situation in the cemetery. My husband, Don Rose, and I are lot owners at the cemetery and have been for 30 years. He's now 77, I'm 65. We both tend to the family members' graves that we have there. We have attended more burials at the Dublin Cemetery for family and friends than we care to count. As we have aged, we realize more than ever the need for improvement and change regarding the pathways, just as Jim Richards has spoken about. This evening, I'd like to remember some friends who are no longer living, and in remembering them, I'd like to share a few cemetery stories with you. Bill Hedley died June 2007. We attended his funeral. As we were leaving the grounds, an older lady by the name of Mrs. Harkness turned her ankle on the gravel, but someone grabbed her in time to keep her from falling. Cheryl Hedley also attended Uncle Bill's service. Cheryl was confined to a wheelchair, and when I spoke with her about getting back to her car and the need for improvement for easier and safer access, her husband used his cellphone to take her photo. He later mailed it to me so that someday I could share with you, the members of council. Even though it's been several years Cheryl has since died, I have kept her photo close to my heart, and I believe this is the day that the Lord has called me to share her photo and the difficulty in being transported over the gravel pathway. So I would like to share that, pass it along. Linda Varga Maschere died September 2007. Linda's cousin Penny was handicapped and used a motorized wheelchair, but due to the gravel and path conditions that September day, the family had to have her stay put. So she sat in a van near the grave, trying to listen to the pastor as he spoke at the gravesite. Reverend Chuck Cook, former pastor of Dublin Community Church, was trying to get to that grave that day, and he was parked many cars behind, and he was not well. He was using a walker carefully, moving very slowly in the gravel. He nearly toppled over near me while trying to make his way to Linda's grave. There are many more situations that I have heard about and observed through the years, but due to the time constraints, I will only share one final story. Lois Dixon. This is a picture of Lois. You may remember Lois. She was a character. I had the privilege of being her good friend and companion and driver for many situations. Here is her photo at the Emerald Ball just one week before she died. She was nearly 100. Lois knew that I was advocating change to make in the cemetery, so that the pathway would be better. She was determined not to hurt herself when walking in the cemetery. She attended many funerals with her elderly friends being there, and once she told me, "A fall in the cemetery with a broken bone at my age could be my last fall, and it could put me six foot under." So to avoid twisting an ankle or falling, her method of operation was to take off her shoes and walk barefoot in the grass and hold on to my arm carrying her dress shoes and her bag, all the way from the church service cemetery entrance to the gravesite. The last funeral that we attended together was Dorothy Mae Moffett, and that was September 2008, when Lois was 99 and a half years old. I know without a doubt that Lois and many others I have spoken to about the pathway, including the Rose and Hedley families, would be very much appreciative, council members, considering this matter of a safer, handicap-friendly pavement surface as a priority for the future of Dublin and its own cemetery. So thank you for allowing me time to share, and in doing so, I'm doing it in love for the remembrance of those that are deceased. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rose. We greatly appreciate you coming in, and Mr. Richards and Amy Saleh is an extremely responsible and responsive representative, so I'm sure she'll stay in touch with you, and staff will be in touch with you to get this issue addressed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do any council members request that any of these six items be removed from the consent agenda?
Excuse me, I have a few questions about Resolution 08-16, the John Shields Parkway Phase 2.
Okay. Let's remove that from the consent agenda, and now we would be addressing the remaining five items. Do I have a motion to approve the remaining five items?
Some move. Second.
Ann?
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amoros-Grooms?
Yes.
We will put, then we'll put Resolution 08-16 on the agenda at the back half with the other resolutions, right Dana?
Right.
Moving on to second readings and public hearing ordinance 03-16, the MAG rezoning...
Rezoning approximately 30 acres, limiting the east side of Perimeter Loop, north of your US 33 state Route 161, south of Perimeter and Venture Drive, from PUD and PCD to PUD to incorporate approximately 5.4 acres into the MAG PUD to expand the automobile dealership campus to accommodate the construction of a combined showroom for the Jaguar and Land Rover brands, the future demolition of the existing Land Rover showroom, a new showroom for the Porsche brand, addition of an elevated showroom addition to the main building for the Lamborghini brand.
Claudia?
Thank you. Good evening, members of council. I am here tonight to just give you a quick update on some of the issues that arose at the first reading, and then Mr. Parrish and Mr. Reynolds are here also representing the applicant to answer any questions you may have. Again, a quick overview of the 30-acre site, which is outlined in yellow on your screen, and it includes particularly those five acres on the eastern side just north of 33. The applicant is proposing to create a new subarea, Subarea C, to accommodate Land Rover and Jaguar as a franchise building, showroom, and service area within the MAG PUD, as well as accommodate display areas and stormwater management and parking for employees and customers. Here is a view of the campus as a whole that the applicant has provided to us. It's the front page of your packet, Ms. It's the front page of your package materials. And moving from sort of the eastern side of 33 to the west, this would be the new Jaguar and Land Rover showroom in the front with the service area to the rear Venture Drive as along the rear of the site. The BMW and Mini building there in the center with Audi just to the west of it, and then what we call the main building, main campus building there to the western side. And then in the north is the existing Land Rover and Range Rover building. Here is one of the issues that was discussed at the first reading, introduction of this ordinance. The applicant has provided this revised site plan that shows this more curvilinear entry drive into the service area, and then also additional articulation with windows and landscaping along that portion of the building, which was something that was discussed at Planning Commission, and then council had also some questions about that at the first reading. And then here's the remainder of all the elevations. So on the south side along 33, you would have the two showroom cubes and then all the service areas around the building on all sides. Here are some pictures, as requested by council, of the existing campus area. There is the Audi building, which I had mentioned in the center of the site, and then the BMW, this is the mini portion of the combined BMW and Mini building, with BMW being accommodated in this white area of the building. And then just to the east off the screen is where this new Land Rover and Jaguar building would be located. And then if we're moving west just a little bit, here is a view of the Volvo showroom. Currently, Porsche is housed in this part of the building as well, and then the owner's penthouse suite is to the top here on the second level, and then another view of that portion of the building. The other question that council members had was regarding the signs, and the applicant has provided a sign inventory, which showcases all of the five sign types permitted within the development text today, which is the DLA identification sign, campus identification signs, directional signs, brand signs, and wall signs. So as you can see there, marked in red is where the location is of all these signs proposed as of today, or existing as of today, and then in this eastern portion of the site, proposed for this application. And then here is just a quick overview of what these signs look like, particularly on the campus. I picked the Audi sign as a representative of the wall sign that is permitted on the site. And like we discussed at the last meeting, the applicant is proposing for Jaguar and Land Rover each to have wall signs on the south elevation of the building. We have uncovered in the sign inventory this particular sign that does not meet the development text, and I have added a condition to the 11 conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending for approval to require the sign to either be removed or to actually meet the development text, as it is intended to be a directional sign, and there are directional sign standards within the text. So with that, we are continuing to recommend approval with the 11 conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as the additional 12th condition to require this particular sign to meet the development text. And as I said, I am here for any questions, as well as the applicant and their team.
Thank you.
Council, any questions? Anyone?
Yeah. Tim? I continue to have concerns about the signage overall. You know, there was some discussion at the last meeting regarding a master sign plan, and I believe that the record reflects that sentiment was expressed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, maybe in 2014. And so I think this presents an opportunity for us to inventory the signs. You know, there are obviously a plethora of signs here, and, you know, make sure that, you know, to the extent that council is satisfied with the existing signage and the proposed signage, that we memorialize that going forward. So that's one concern, so I don't know whether the rest of council wants to comment on that.
It seems like that's a major concern. We might as well comment on, take them one at a time. Amy, do you have something on the side?
Yeah, I agree with the idea of a master sign plan, and I had circled that Volvo sign that you caught, Claudia, but then also in our, on page three of the photographs, there is sign D10 and sign D11 that don't appear to me to be, they look temporary in nature, like that Volvo sign that you pointed out. And in looking, I mean, we've got so many different things going on here. You know, I made notes to myself. I said sign salad. I mean, it just, there are 33 signs on this site, and I'm not sure, you know, were they added over time? It's like, oh, we need one here, and now that we are going to have a complete campus, maybe it's a good idea to revise that. And with regard to the signage, I would really appreciate, going forward, whenever we have cases at Planning Commission, the more photographs we can get of the existing conditions, the better. I think our discussion would have been a lot different had we had these photos. And, you know, we may have come up with that idea on our own with regard to a master sign plan, because it just, it didn't feel like it was a complete. You know, we are looking at the completion of this campus, and I want to make sure that what we have is, you know, the best that we can get, and that we're going to have something that looks and functions well into the future, because we probably won't see them again. You know, we won't have this opportunity, I should say.
If I could add something, that my suggestion includes these internal signs that are visible from the right away. I think, as I expressed last time, you know, I talked about some of these signs that, I don't know, Claudia, you may have corrected me or had, you know, more detailed accounting of the height of the signs, of those internal signs and so forth, but I think we all know what I'm talking about. You know, I know there are internal signs that I believe are lighted. I mean, I know I can see them at night from 33, westbound 33. And so my suggestion is to include that in this larger master sign plan proposal.
Yeah, at this point in time, those signs are not regulated as signage. Any business could put up a sign internal, and if it's more than six feet or three feet, three feet behind the window, then it can be as big and as light, and we don't regulate it as signage, and I would propose that we need to regulate that as signage, because it's signage. And, you know, as such, it needs to be regulated, not, you know, just for this campus, but for the whole community.
John?
I just want to thank the applicant for taking care of the problem we've had with the elevation, and I think that's probably a pretty decent solution to that problem. I think all of council was aware of it, as was P and Z, so I appreciate the fact you guys addressed that issue. The signage issue, I agree that, you know, if there's any way to consolidate the signs, it'd be great. I have driven through your campus, and I noticed that most of them are directional, and they're somewhat beneficial. So I hope that when we're reviewing this, we're also very practical on the people that come to visit this facility and can find their way through it. So I think that would be an important aspect of this, is if you look up the signs and you see all the D signs, they're pretty much directional signs, to help you find where you're going. And I just find meandering around through your campus somewhat confusing, so I can see why, over time, they've started putting signage out there. But I agree with Amy and with Tim that we have limited signs in this community, and it's for a really strong purpose for aesthetics. And what can be done with that, I think is probably going to have to leave it up to the staff to figure out. Thank you. You know, we use that campus personally, and it is very difficult to find your way around there. So I don't think we're asking you to do anything that we don't do ourselves, and the city just invested significant money in wayfinding for our own historic district and the Bridge Street project as well. So we're not asking, again, we're not asking you to do things we wouldn't do, and I think an overall comprehensive overview would probably lend itself to the entire project as well, so.
So I would tend to agree. We also use the campus, and the only issue that I really see is the variety of signs. I think that sort of speaks to your sign salad point. There's just a lot of different types here. It doesn't seem to be very contiguous across the different areas. I certainly am a proponent of a master sign plan, and that's what I'd like to see, including pictures or renderings where a picture is not available, because we do have these rules for a very significant reason. When people come into Dublin, they come into Dublin, and they say, wow, I don't know what it is, but it's different here. And the signage is part of the reason why it's different here. And so I'd like to stay consistent with that.
Chris?
I have a couple of thoughts. You just wanted to talk about signs right now?
Can we just do it with the signs first?
Sure. Claudia, do you have any calculation of the square footage of signs on the campus?
In total, no, I do not.
In total. I think that's, to me, that would be an important number. We are the, you know, that's something we look at very closely, of the size of the signs, and we certainly would hold to that sort of standard. So really, that's my comment as to signs. When we, I'm a proponent of seeing a sign package come back. I also would like to see total square footage of signage for the piece of property, because I think that will be important as well.
Do you guys want to step up and address this issue with signs? I mean, are you willing to work here on this sign issue and come up with some? Obviously, there's pretty unanimous concern about the signs all the way across the board.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, City Council. My name's Brad Parrish with Architectural Alliance, again, representing MAG on this. Just a couple of points, as the signage, on the snowy Wednesday after our last meeting, or Tuesday it would have been, I was out there, and yes, there are three signs that I found myself that are non-conforming. It was the D2, D11, and D10. Firstly, they do not match, so I've addressed that with the owner. Were intentions to remove those from the campus and incorporate them somehow into the blade signs or anything that's currently out there. I do want to call attention that Midwestern Auto Group's campus is one, it's an automotive shopping mall that's representing 16 brands, and it's just not, you know, it's just not one brand. So every brand needs to be sort of represented in the internal workings of the campus. So, you know, through this process, for the years that I've worked with Claudia, that's why we sort of started the categorization of directional versus brand signs versus campus. And really, MAG is, I would say, on the campus utilized or unrecognized, other than the pond sign, correct? You know, so I think from that standpoint, I did speak with the owner about the signage in totality, and we would like to come back with the master sign plan for this. However, we don't want the master sign plan, I mean, obviously, that's going to take a design charrette in itself to do the right thing for this unique campus, and I don't want that signage to sort of hold up this last, yeah, the last five acres here and moving forward, and at least the, you know, the wall signs that are associated with the Jaguar Land Rover facility. So if we can somehow work in that as a condition, and then I'd be happy to come back and work, give a package for a master sign plan on the site, so.
Okay, so focusing just on the sign issue, Dana, what's the best way to do that? Do we tie that and address the remainder?
Yep.
What we can do is create a new condition that requires them to come back for a master sign plan approval. Would you want that to go to Planning Commission first and then come to council with a recommendation?
I don't see why not. I mean, if we go back to the normal procedure, that seems to be a wise thing to do.
We can condition that.
Okay, so is everybody, would everybody up here that's commented be satisfied with that approach?
For the signage, yes.
Okay. And then now, Tim, back to you. Do you have remaining issues you'd like?
I would just want to clarify with the consent of council, you know, that this would include the interior signs as well?
It sounds like they're cooperating, and, you know, we can at least discuss the issue and address it.
I'd like to have the discussion. I mean, you know, make your argument, you know, with respect to whether it should be grandfathered, so to speak, or whatever. And, you know, certainly, I would like to ask staff, apart, you know, from MAG in this application, to look at regulation going forward citywide with respect to that particular issue.
And this is going to be a really silly issue, but for some reason, it sticks in my craw, the fact they turn on all their flashers in the showroom. You know, if this were a pizza shop, we wouldn't allow a blinking light to be in the front window. You know, just because it happens to be the hazards of a Jaguar, doesn't make it any less blinking, so.
Okay.
Take that for what it's worth. Okay, so we're adding the condition of working with staff and then going through P and Z and coming back for the master sign.
Sounds good.
Plan. Tim, back to you.
I'm going to, you know, share the opportunity to make comments. I think council member grooms might like to make a few comments, whatever other issues we want to raise, raise away.
Claudia, could you leave that overall site plan up there, please? I have a couple more things I'd like to address. So the last time they finished this campus and we wrapped up this, we had the mounding installed down this direction so that we would set that condition moving forward, that this direction, the mounding along the 33 frontage, would already, would be in place. In this iteration, they're looking at removing a section of the mounding here that would, you know, provide much more of a vista into the facility from the 33 frontage. And I guess I want to take a very long-term perspective on this. Jaguars and Land Rovers are lovely, and they're really not necessarily offensive to look at, but we've had a series of car dealerships in our community that have started as one car dealership and have changed into another car dealership. We have seen the Cadillac dealership on Sawmill. We've seen it go to Honda. We've seen the Hummer dealership on 161 go to Cadillac. We've seen the Porsche dealership on Post Road go to used cars. And we don't have any control in the future of what sort of cars they'll be selling at this facility. And I want to be very careful that we aesthetically maintain our 33 corridor. You know, we had said that we didn't want it to be full of car dealerships, and here we are. We're talking about it being full of car dealerships. We said that we wanted consistent mounding along that area so that it wasn't a sea of for-sale cars. And each time we open up areas, we are opening those vistas into the car dealerships. And so I have some concerns, not particularly about the cars that you're selling today. They're lovely. The building is lovely. It is well-kept. That may or may not be the condition somewhere down the road. So I have some concerns about removing the mounding in this area, making this a pond. I know that you have stormwater issues to deal with. We certainly could extend the size of this pond over here. We could slide these fingers more over this direction, and we could continue the mounding that we've had in place previously. So I would like to hear what you all would think about that, because that would be something I'd be supportive of. And one thing I wanted to clarify is, I know that we had asked you to hold all of your hedge plantings five feet off the back of the curb. The drawings I had, I couldn't scale real well, but are we holding them five feet off the curb as well here?
The landscaping around the new fingers is to replicate what we did in the BMW. So it was the next, the previous development.
I think we caught that there, because some of the older hedge plantings over here are now getting really close to the cars, and they're starting to prune them real hard, and they don't look as good as they may have if we'd have held the plantings back off the curb. So thank you. Appreciate that. So those are my thoughts, some concerns that I have.
I agree with those concerns. I share those concerns. I, for a long time, have not been able to reconcile, you know, from the very beginning, you know, these raised fingers. We could make a joke there, but anyway, these raised fingers, as compared to crown and how we've required them to mound and thereby screen, you know, their cars. I think, as I mentioned in the last meeting, everywhere else in our community. cars. I think, as I mentioned in the last meeting, everywhere else in our community, you know, where we are parking cars, and I understand this is a business, and it's, the business is to sell cars, but we would screen the cars. You know, and here, you know, the attraction to MAG is the visibility, obviously, on 33, and I get that. And I think you achieve that to a large degree with your buildings and the distinctive architecture and so forth, so.
Permitting them the signs much higher than we would anywhere else in our community. The signs are 30 feet in the air, or 15 feet?
20.
20 feet.
They exceed code.
Yes.
But, yes, right. So, you know, if, you know, there was a way to, and with respect to these, these water basins, if there was a way to combine the two, I really, I'm, I'm not a big fan of the water features that were included in the last expansion. I just, I don't think they're substantial enough. But I understand there's a practical need for these as well, and I'm clearly not an engineer.
Anyone else?
No, I'd like to ask the architect. I mean, I heard what Tim said about the water features and trying to tie them together, and I understand what you're trying to do visibility-wise. And, you know, we can't engineer this sitting here right now, but, you know, if you could put mounds in and make the secondary area actually work for retention or detention, I mean, you have to tell us that. I mean, this thing, obviously, was designed with a great bit of care, and, and I think, you know, for us to try to engineer it sitting here is somewhat problematic. And I agree with what Chris Grooms is saying about, you know, we, and I don't really know how your contract's written. If this thing's held as one unit by the owner, or in the future, it could be, you know, used car lots and subdivided that, I, you know, those kind of details we're not really privy to, so we don't understand. So, you know, I'm just curious, you know, if those amendments can be made, and, you know, are they practical things that could be addressed by your firm?
Yeah, I would first have to go back and really study it to see. I know sliding the fingers to the west, in a sense, would start to cut down on the building area, just by the very nature of the finger design, to make that other pond a lot larger. Is there other supplemental underground systems that we can use to get away from this ponding? I would have to explore that with staff and engineering. I mean...
Or the possibility of enlarging the existing pond, making it deeper and, you know, perhaps making it more, to Tim's point, that it really isn't a functional ecosystem. I don't know that it has the volume of water to be a functional ecosystem, so I, you know, perhaps we could make it.
You're saying the one along 161, the one in the BMW?
Correct.
It's not a stormwater management pond. It's just a pretty pond.
It's a pretty pond, yeah. Both, yeah, both ponds...
Maybe we could make it a stormwater management pond.
It's the highest point on the site. So, it's, that's why, so actually, the, both ponds along 33 are fed by an underwater well that keeps the water level high at all times, and it's a spillover effect. There's a lot of tannins in the water, in the well water, located on site, and we're actually using each pond to filter the water, because it's then, in turn, used to sprinkle, for sprinkler water on site. So, it goes daisy-chained through a series of ponds and then through the head. So, that's kind of what we're, we're using it as majority.
So, the pond, the new pond along 33, 161, is not?
Is more of a decorative one. It's the bigger, it's the bigger one, the one on east, east side is not. That is actually a detention.
The furthest east?
The furthest east one by Children's Hospital is a detention pond.
And the other one is just pretty? Oh, so it could just be mounding there, and what would happen?
It would just be mounding. But it was, it was kind of a, you know, again, by, by the owner of Midwestern Auto Group to create these vistas and a rhythm along 33 corridor.
When we brought SubArea B forward in 2012, when BMW and Mini was moving from Post Road, the staff recommendation actually was to increase the mounding in that area, because that was such a concern with the existing main building, and it was council that thought that it would be appropriate to continue the, the view and the feel and the look and the design of that area along 33. So, with SubArea C coming online, we did not make that recommendation furthermore. So, additionally, the zoning code does allow for a lowered screening along display areas for vehicles.
It's 20, 25%, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Claudia, I, I'm glad you made that, pointed that out, the staff recommendation with respect to SubArea B. So, yes, I do recall that being staff's recommendation, but I don't believe the applicant was in agreement with that.
Correct.
And, and council, you know, accepted that.
Correct.
Albeit not unanimously.
Correct.
I don't know how much less than unanimously. Anyway.
Well, I mean, I guess if somebody wants to make some sort of a motion to address that issue, I...
Could we condition the removal of the second aesthetic pond?
You can.
Into the continued mounding that is really consistent with the balance of the development?
Could we include that it will, will have engineering review it and make sure, you know, with staff consultation, as long as it's feasible to remove it in terms of engineering recommendations?
Mm-hmm. That would be wise.
And we probably need some clarification as to the extent of the mounding. Is it for the entire length of the southern boundary of SubArea C?
Well, we built the mound when we did...
Right, right.
It's there today, largely.
Correct, with the idea that there would be an office building with a parking lot there, correct.
So...
But there is, I mean, we are allowed, you know, sort of a display window of 20%, 25% along that frontage. So, you know, again, are we saying the whole length, or do I, are we allowed?
The elevation of that mound at present is 40, 4 feet.
I think it's 6.
I think it's 6.
Yeah, it tapers from 3 at the pond, it goes from 3, and then it goes up to 6.
You know, by law...
I think some dilations might be appropriate in that mounding, so that, you know, if you, we...
But, tell me about this 25%, Claudia. I'm, I don't remember this, that there is that, that 25% window. So, approximately, if we have the pond there, what percentage of that frontage is that, the 25% or?
Well, in the zoning code, vehicular display areas are allowed to have a lowered screening of 2 feet for all, for 25% of the frontage that is used for vehicle display. So, it, it relieves you of the VOA screening, the vehicular use area screening requirements that we have for all kinds of parking lots and drive aisles and so forth. So, for what MAG has been permitted to do on SubArea A and SubArea B is to have a lowered screening along the entire length, so they were not held at the 25%.
Similar to what happened in the Lexus dealership on 161. We had the same issue there. We lowered that stone wall. If you'll recall, the stone wall is very low in front of, in front of those cars to achieve that 25%. So, you didn't hide the entire car, just softened the transition.
Right.
Now, currently, you have plantings in the previous parcel that's going to get about 4 feet tall. So, I, I mean, I guess what I'm looking for is the net-net improvement that we're going to get out of this. By the landscape code, he has to have 3 foot of mounding, correct?
3 and 1/2, yes.
So, if he builds the mound, then he's going to get rid of the planting screen, I presume, or he may not require it any longer.
Potentially.
So, he could take out all the landscape. So, I'm just trying to, you know, in my mind, I'm trying to figure out, okay, what's the most beneficial thing aesthetically, and also helps the client get, accomplish his mission, so.
And that's sort of what we did in front of the BMW, was along the drive, there is that landscaping, you know, and we've continued that along. And we've actually added some fuller tree, you know, some larger trees on this one, again, to sort of, because we don't have a vehicular display in that area.
Which is good.
Display is, you know, 50, 60, 70 feet deep from that point. So, you know, just in front of the showroom. So, that's really where the trade-off was, was in the last campus in BMW and Mini as well as here. So, we're not really displaying the cars, we're displaying the building.
Well, in your, in your previous one, too, I don't know if you were aware of it, but the plants that was selected by the landscape architect, your plant is going to grow 4 feet tall.
4 feet tall, yep.
So, you're going to have, you're going to have a pretty good screen.
Right.
Which is great, because that's a through part, part of your project, a through affair, and it's something we don't necessarily need to see. And then, you know, your fingers, we understand, and they also have a landscape wrapping around them. So, I guess what I'm weighing is, you know, we put the mounds in, are we really gaining, you know, maybe we are aesthetically. You would not have to, and you already have the mound in there, as I recall, right, part of it? So, do you have to shave it down so you can meet the 3-foot requirement?
Right.
Which would do a pretty good job hiding the cars parked in there and the ones going through the area. Or we keep the pond, and you plant it with an entire string of plants again.
I would assume that if we did the mound, it would just become that grove of trees across there, you know, and you wouldn't get the additional 3-foot or 4-foot hedge that's lining the drive at this time.
Well, it's not required by code.
Right, right.
So, you wouldn't be responsible for that.
Well, we've certainly seen the decline in the hedging material on the original section, you know, in an attempt to try to keep them really at an unattainable level over the course of time. It's really taken its toll on this, and, you know, certainly will here ultimately as well. If you have the mound, you have something that is attainable and...
The hedges on the first...
I get it. I mean, I understand the tension.
Yeah, the hedges on the first fingers, and this was way, going back to, you know, I've read the minutes from whenever, '97, I think it was, and the, the, the display, you know, area, the 25% that we're talking about, those hedges are only junipers in front. To grow really low, that's the 25% is the tips of the fingers only. So, they're deliberately low, where in the next, in the BMW, we don't have, we negated that and said, no, that's not our, we don't have a vehicular use display in the BMW. We have the mound, we're doing the landscaping, we're pushing it far enough away, so, you know, cars don't run over it, et cetera, et cetera, through the, through the winter months, so.
Well, I, I agree with John in terms of, you know, how he's approaching this, his analysis of, you know, what's the net-net gain here. And, you know, so I'm certainly open to suggestions. I mean, I'm not, I, so with respect to this, the westernmost pond, new pond or water feature, you're, the objective here was to create a view shed to the building, is what I hear you saying.
Correct.
And, and so that landscaping on the, on the perimeter of the lot there should achieve some screening of the parking there or whatever. I'm not sure that that's necessarily the display. I don't know.
No, it's, it's pretty much the drive aisle. I mean, we're screening the drive aisle adjacent to it. And Jason?
So, I guess, right here, you know, this is all screening, and really, you know, the building's here, yes, there is a little bit of display in front of the building, but again, that is, I mean, if this is 60 feet from the property, you're another, more, more so, 120 from that pond. So, I mean, you're really, really, I mean, it's, it's not there to screen the display, it's to really screen, to screen the road that's coming through here and soften this. So, using this pond and all that, I mean, you're really giving it another element as you drive by, just not a grove of trees and hillside.
Did all this get flushed out, Amy, at P and Z? Do you recall, or is this our first pass at this issue?
I missed the first meeting that this was discussed. I mean, you know, we've got the minutes. It was, it was more, the discussion that I was present for was more about the architecture of the building. We talked about the sign height, we talked about the building in back needing some articulation on that back piece, and they were responsive there. We did not spend a lot of time talking about the mounding. I think, from the Planning Commission's perspective, it was, you know, staff had hammered that out, and generally speaking, I think the Planning Commission really likes this campus a lot, likes the architecture, likes the, the feel of it, you know, talked about the fact that it is, you know, one of the most dynamic, coolest car campuses anywhere. And that sort of dominated the discussion, I would say. You had a very, you know, warm reception. And this, I think we talked about the pond sort of repeating, you know, you've got the, the pond in front, and that it was, you know, repeating a water element from the previous campus, and, you know, providing that view shed in, and then having the landscaping out by the fingers, and then also screening the drive aisle, just as Mr. Parrish is. So, no, I, you know, it was not my recollection, and Claudia, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this wasn't something that, the mounding versus the pond was not something that was discussed?
It was not something that staff raised. I mean, from a, from a staff perspective, we looked at this as a continuation, as the existing character of the campus that had been approved by the Planning Commission and council in the two prior iterations.
I think the general sense is it's a great project on balance. There's two issues now. There's a little issue with this pond and screening and whatever, and the signs. And we, out of the condition that you're going to come to an agreement on the signs, are you willing to accept a condition that you'll come to an agreement about revisiting that pond and the mound and the issues that have been raised in order to get us moving on and get this project otherwise, unless people have other concerns, I mean?
I would, I would be happy to look at it from, you know, baking short from an engineering, but also from a view into it. I mean, I want to make the campus, finish the campus, whatever you want to say.
Right. And we don't know for sure what our options are.
Yeah, I mean, until I go back and study with my, my consultants, you know, I'm going to do the best to make this look great, so.
Can we do that, Jennifer, add another condition to address this issue?
Sure, we can have them, do you want to have them work with staff, or do you want them to come back, work with staff and come back to you for final approval of exploring, removing that pond?
You know, this becomes a subjective thing, and I think you have to decide, it's, do I want a plaid couch or red couch? Okay, so I looked at your numbers, and I checked what you're doing, and you have a plant that grows 4 feet between the pond and your building. So, I don't know if, in the view shed, if you're driving by, you sort of focus on the pond, and there'll be a green wall there, but then above that green wall, you'll see your signage. Or is it better to, what Chris said, maybe put a mound in and take out the lake, and you take out all your shrubbery, and, but that, by law, could be 3 feet tall. So, in one, the city picks up an extra foot growth over time and a little more screenage, and over the other, we have permanence of a mound which lasts forever. And, of course, it depends on the quality of our people who really go out and review these things and keep them up on how, what the quality of all our projects are, as trees die and plants need to be replaced. And that's sort of a staff responsibility to make sure that everybody's property is looking strack here, and we want it that way. So, you know, it's, it's pretty subjective.
I, I agree with everything you're saying. I certainly do. You know, the pond that's there, I don't know that it's lived up to the expectations that maybe we had when we were looking at that pond. And I think it's important to know that the, that the additional pond, or the new pond, is quite a bit smaller yet. So, it will be less dramatic, less, less of a presence than the one that's existing. And, you know, I don't know if that's a condition worth repeating.
You already put that slide up there? I'm thinking, wait a minute, you already have this as a condition. How did you do that?
I'm so good.
Claudia is, Claudia is really good at conditions.
I guess so.
We, as, as they're coming out of our mouths, and, I mean, before we even think it, she's got the condition typed out.
Now I'm blushing, stop.
So, can you read that? Are you okay with condition number 14?
So, we added, prior to you receiving your packets, we had added 12, which is that the applicant revised sign D2 to meet the development text requirements. And then, based on the discussion tonight, I add a 13, which would be that the applicant return to the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council for a comprehensive review and approval of a master sign plan prior to the issuance of sign permits, I can't spell, for SubArea C. Sorry about that. And then, for 14, based on the discussion regarding the pond... based on the discussion regarding the pond, I would suggest we say that the applicant work with staff to eliminate the aesthetic pond in sub-area, or on the west side of the southern boundary of sub-area C, and provide undulated mounding in its place.
And did you, and maybe I missed it, but I thought we were saying, and then that issue should come back to us as well. Or no, we don't think that's necessary?
No.
All right.
The planning and zoning commission would review that then as part of their final development plan approval, and they would have the record of this meeting at their disposal.
Can we add one caveat that they actually investigate, you know, both solutions, the planning zoning commission, and just go with what they think's the best? I mean, I don't...
I, I agree with John. I mean, I, I...
This has come, this is mistaken.
I, 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 I see your point, you know, that this is subjective. And, and I also appreciate Ms. Grims' point, you know, with respect to the newer pond, you know, being less substantial than, than the one in sub-area B. And, and that's a concern to me. But again, that, that, that's a concern to me. That's, that's a subjective view that I have that, that we, we apparently share, but I'm not sure that everybody up here shares, and I don't know whether the planning and zoning commission would share. So I would agree with you, John, you know, that, that I, I would, I would like for the applicant to explore the undulated mounding in, in fourteen in good faith. And, and then, you know, present those options and, you know, let the, let the, you know, the better proposal prevail, I guess.
And there may be a way, I would certainly appreciate renderings of, you know, the view from thirty-three, you know, what is that gonna look like? And then, you know, again, we go back to, it's, it's in the execution and it's in the details. And, you know, if we have the pond and then we have the four feet, then that, you know, that could be fine. But as Ms. Grims alluded to, you know, the, the condition of the plant material in the first fingers is really not attractive. So does that need to be reworked? You know, do we need, I, I don't know, you know, how that gets inspected as an annual inspection or whatever, but in any case, it's not meeting expectations that, you know, I'm sure back in nineteen ninety-seven, I think he said that to me.
One thing I know is, Mr. Parrish will do a great job. He, the campus is beautiful. That is not under question in any way, shape or form. I think there's just a few details maybe we need to look at a bit, a little bit closer and...
Yeah.
And you'll be ready to cross the tape. It's, it is lovely. I mean, you've done a very nice job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So you can live with those additional conditions?
I, I just have one question about thirteen with respect to the master sound, sign code. What does that do with the signage that's in the package for the Jaguar Land Rover franchise, at least the wall signs itself? You know, I can, I can, I, I understand from a ground sign, you know, coming together as a master sign code, but, you know, the wall signs are unique to this brand, and I'd really like to at least have that, you know, not as, you know, that I can move forward with and I can work with everything else.
No, I, I think we're okay with that, aren't we? As, as we were the last meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, discuss this.
Somehow exclude those signs that he's referring to?
I think it's all part of the package. I, I don't know that anyone's looking to take a whole lot away. I think we're just looking at inventory and calculate where it is and...
And come up with the best solution you can.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I want to make sure that we can still move forward with this.
You have to have those, those signs at that height for this new building.
I have to have it at, yes, correct.
Right. I think everybody understands it.
And in condition twelve, I think we need to add sign D ten and D eleven.
Yes.
Watch this.
[laughing]
Like magic.
Close eye on that.
D ten, D eleven. Okay. Does, does council have any concerns about this legislation that is not addressed by those additional conditions?
Thank you for indulging me, I do appreciate it.
Anything else?
The internal signs.
And thank you, Mr. Parrish. I, I, I agree with the, you know, the comments made by Ms. Grims with respect to your efforts here and, and so forth, and, and really do appreciate it and appreciate your patience with certainly my concerns.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and the, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just, one more thing with, when we talk about a master sign plan, we include the internally illuminated signs that are currently unregulated.
Can I clear that up? None of those, none of those are internally lit. There, there's a light, there's a spotlight maybe on it, but they're not internally illuminated. Okay.
The Volvo sign?
It's not internally lit.
It glows blue. How does that work?
Because there's a light on the outside hitting it. It's not internally lit.
Interesting.
Cool.
Clever.
All kind of cool effects, trust me.
Well, that's a sign, and I want it regulated, okay? I'm just saying.
All right, with those additional conditions, Anne, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aluda?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Samaras Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it.
We appreciate all of your effort. Ordinance zero four dash sixteen.
Authorizing appropriation of a zero point zero six, six acre more or less feasible right-of-way, zero point zero zero four acre more or less permanent drainage easement, zero point five five zero acre more or less temporary construction easement from Columbus Industrial Owner One LLC from the property at forty-three fifty-three Taller Ridge Drive for public purpose of constructing a new roadway related public improvements.
Thank you. Anne, Dana?
Good evening, members of council. The new roadway is John Shields Parkway and related improvements. That's between what was Dale, what is Dale Drive formerly known as Taller Ridge Drive and Village Parkway. We have been in discussions with the owner, and we remain hopeful that we can reach an amicable agreement with the owner. This also is in reference to a, to using quick-take procedures in accordance with chapter one sixty-three of the revised code. Should those negotiations with the owner be unsuccessful, but we'll do our best to, to make that happen. The appraised fair market value of the land was determined to be three, thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Staff recommends approval of ordinance four dash sixteen.
Thank you, Dana. Council questions?
Move for approval?
We're at oh four sixteen?
Mm-hmm, we are.
Good, thank you.
You okay? You can wait?
I had ordinance...
Okay.
I move for approval for sixteen.
Is there a second? Anne?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Samaras Grooms?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Aluda?
Yes.
Ordinance oh five dash sixteen as amended?
Authorizing city manager to execute real estate purchase agreement necessary conveyance documentation to acquire seventy-three point six fifty acres more or less feasible interest located at sixty-six hundred Shire Rings Road from John P. Regal, trustee of the Robert W. Rings Charitable Remainder Unit Trust and RBG Properties LLC, appropriating funds therefore.
And there was an amended ordinance at our seats when we came in this evening, correct? I want to make sure.
Correct. I believe we did also push that out by email the other day as well.
Just make sure everyone's got the right one in front of...
Right.
Could you, could you highlight the changes between those two documents?
I think she will. You...
Donna, you want to do that?
Sure, the, the changes between the two documents really have to do with the details that were negotiated in the real estate purchase agreement. And those have to do with the conditions surrounding the one million dollar gift and the, the financing of the five point nine million dollar purchase price.
And I'm assuming you're touching on that when you go through your general...
I will.
Okay, go.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, members of council. And tonight, staff seeks authorization to proceed with the real estate transaction in the amount of five point nine million dollars to acquire property located at sixty-six hundred Shire Rings Road for the purposes of economic development. This property is located in Dublin's West Innovation District and is comprised of two parcels consisting of approximately seventy-three point six five acres. As such, it represents one of the largest remaining undeveloped properties with established road frontage on Shire Rings Road and significant views from US thirty-three, and is serviced completely with appropriate water, sewer, accessible roadways, and broadband. Given the proximity to Dublin Methodist Hospital and Ohio University, the site presents numerous development and collaboration opportunities. Similar to the city's efforts in the past, the city of Dublin will have the ability to leverage this job-ready site as an economic development incentive and minimize the amount of time spent by a company searching for a potential development site. Regarding the financial structure, the five point nine million dollar purchase price will be paid by the city to the Robert W. Rings Charitable Remainder Unit Trust, beginning with an initial payment of one million one hundred eighty thousand dollars at the time of closing, and for annual installment payments of one million two hundred eighty-five thousand twenty-five dollars. However, in this transaction, we are very fortunate that the seller has agreed to donate one million dollars to the city of Dublin within seven years after the execution of the real estate purchase agreement. The donation will be made to the city to benefit underprivileged and/or handicapped youth within the community through cultural arts and educational opportunities, which may include the construction of related facilities in support of that programming and outreach. In summary, the details that have been clarified as a result of the final negotiations of the real estate purchase agreement since the first reading include language on how the one million dollar donation to the city may be used, as well as the payment structure of the purchase price. With that, we recommend approval of this amended ordinance and would like to acknowledge Mr. John Regal, trustee of the Robert W. Rings Trust, who's in the audience this evening. And I would like to answer any questions at this time.
Welcome, Mr. Regal. Thanks for working on this with you. Council questions?
I have a few questions about the change in the language with respect to the cultural arts offerings for underprivileged and/or handicapped youth within the community.
Yes.
I didn't see any definitions in here of those sorts of things. You know, what, what does that really mean? What is that going to look like? I guess one of my concerns is with the million dollars, if we were going, what I don't want to do is tie the hands of those that would want to use this money for the cultural arts and things that certainly would be accessible to those people groups if it was too narrowly defined. And that was one of my concerns, that those, that those definitions were very narrow. Or the, the termino, I'm sorry, the terminology was very narrow, and we don't really have definitions to match up with, with that. Within the community, is that the community of the school district? Is that within our city borders? Is that with the community at large? Those kinds of things. So I, I wanted to have a little discussion on that.
Well...
If anyone else shares my concerns, perhaps they don't.
I'm sorry. No, I think it needs clarity.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Regal, I, can you shed light on that? You understand the concern, so you get it.
To be able to make the contribution back to the city, it has to abide by what the trust regulations say in it. And the trust set up by Robert Rings was set up to help handicapped children or underprivileged economically or physically or mentally. And the community is actually Franklin Delaware Counties, okay? So the money's to stay in these communities. We want it to be ambiguous enough to give you some leeway in it, but it still has to abide by what the trust states. So, you know, we kind of had the, had the language in there that we sent to Phil Hartman to incorporate it. I think it's a great opportunity for the city. One of the reasons I really wanted to do it is to maybe have other community members look at this and say, you know what, we can use the city to help negotiate or help charity or charitable offerings as opposed to just giving it to charitable organizations. All right, so we really wanted to, to, to use the city and, and maybe let you guys leverage that gift to entice other entities to come in and say, hey, we got a, you know, we got a subsidy here to, to work with this about donating some more money into here. So that was my purpose and, and really wanting to work with you guys on that.
So it seems clear to me that something like the Miracle League would certainly fall within the scope of this.
The what league?
The Miracle League ball, ball fields over at Dari Fields, if you're familiar with that.
Actually, yeah, I mean, as long as we get into a five oh one C three.
Right.
You know, operational for that.
But, but let me go to the, the, the counterpoint to that then would be, at the other end of the spectrum might be a cultural arts center.
Correct.
Now tell me how, in your view, you balance those two. Clearly, the, the, the Miracle Field would be definitely acceptable. How do you see the cultural arts center?
Well, one of the things that we were talking out with staff anyway is to maybe have programming that will bring in some underprivileged kids to show them what the, the cultural arts are like, that they're never going to use, maybe pay for letting them come in and, and, you know, underwriting their cost.
Mm-hmm.
And doing that, have handicap accessibility to the facility.
Absolutely would, yeah, that's...
So, Mike, I guess I'd like to clarify that. So if you believe the Miracle League would fit clearly, because to me, that's an athletic field, and athletics isn't...
It deals with challenged youth.
Cultural arts.
Right. But cultural arts, while it fits, are, what he's, what I'm hearing him to say is, if there was programming for, for those two classes that you mentioned, that that would comply with the requirements of the trust.
Yeah, or, or, or setting up a, a, a part of the facility for them. Maybe, I mean, for handicapped kids, maybe they can't use the stages, maybe you have to create something for them. So it could be, you know, brick and mortar as well.
But athletics would fall in cultural arts?
Well, it wouldn't fall in cultural arts.
If it were designed for...
But, but I think in that it says...
To benefit the...
...can be used for that or other programs.
That would benefit that people group. Okay.
You know, one of the reasons that I, that, that you want to put, I've been doing this a long time, I've been doing this for thirty-eight years. You don't want to take a large sum of money and split it up so much that you dilute it, and you don't get a big bang for your buck. So to have, have a chunk of money to be able to use in one, one setting sometimes is more beneficial than to splitting it up a bunch of different things. I mean, it, it's up to you guys.
Agreed.
I wanted you to have some saying that rather than beat them up and say, hey, I'm gonna, you know, demand this, which is usually what I do.
Well, that's wonderful.
I mean, usually, it's really hard to get me to...
Yeah. Let's fast forward though and, and say that we, we're down the road now, we're ready to build something or do something. What's the, what's the process where it gets, yeah, it's okay?
The blessing of the trust.
The blessing of the, of the gift.
It, it, I don't have to give the blessing on it when I'm putting in here. You just have to abide by, you know, what the, what the agreement is and has to be used for, you know, brick and mortar type of things. I don't want to pay salaries.
Right.
For people. I want it to be actually used for those kids, and they get the benefit of it, not paying a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, some instructor to, to write a program up.
Right. The stipulation is that it has to, to abide by the parameters of the trust, it has to benefit underprivileged or handicapped children. And then we illustrate that that could be through cultural opportunities. Okay, that was our addition. Yes. I didn't see those.
That was your vision.
It's a broad brush.
Yes.
And it's... I mean, that's what staff came to me with and said, is this where, I mean, originally, we were looking at libraries.
Yes, yeah.
Which I might really need too.
Right.
And so we can include the programming. If we would use it towards a facility, we will offer, we've got a naming portion in that section as well. And so theoretically, if we were to violate it, if we weren't to use it for that purpose, we could have a breach of contract.
Correct.
But that's, I mean, there are plenty of uses, given the broad level of discretion that we're...
Yeah, I mean, as, as a fiduciary and trustee, I got to make sure that, you know, what I give out abides by what the trust says, or I'm in trouble.
Right.
Yeah, don't get us wrong, we're very, very appreciative and very thankful for the, for the gift. We just want to make sure we understand how we can, how we can use it.
Clarifying it now is better than trying to clarify it later.
Yeah, always.
And tell me about the naming rights. Is it named after the grantors of the trust?
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, I, I, what we put into is a Robert W. Rings Foundation and John P. Regal trustee. That's what I've done on all the, all the things I've done for Children's Hospital and, and the other, other ways we want.
So we know what the name will be. You'll just pick which place you put the name.
You pick the place, actually.
Okay, okay, great.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand. Went to school with some of the Rings family, graduated from high school back in the day.
Thank you very much. I, my questions were just, I, I just wanted to try to make, provide some clarity for it, but certainly do appreciate
do appreciate the generosity. You absolutely did. I didn't realize that that was language that we put in there, that... So it might have been helpful to have some of the trust language, but we'll get there. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I was struggling with, you know, we didn't have the benefit of the back and forth, I guess, you know, between staff and Mr. Regal. So, you know, I mean, I read this language, and this language looks more limiting than the language that was originally proposed to us. And so if I understand you, what you're saying is that's not the case.
Correct. It's actually more expansive.
It's counterintuitive, then.
Could we just reference the intent of the trust rather than the language in these documents?
Well, I think it's clear to have it spelled out, so that if we don't have those documents from the trust, we can tell from the face of the agreement. I mean, we could include, we could get the actual language incorporating the trust and include that.
I just think it would, you know, it's like playing a game of telephone. Every time somebody hears it, they hear something a little bit different, and I'd like to get as close to the source as we could.
Sure.
Okay, so clarification. When you say sure, what are we doing?
We can include that as an attachment to the real estate purchase agreement. So we've got that as an exhibit, the intent of the trust.
And I guess I don't want to be in the middle of negotiating this, but, Mr. Regal, are you okay with that?
So we would include the limitations of the trust, the purpose of the trust, as an exhibit to the real estate purchase? Okay.
The ordinance is written is a little bit even clearer than the staff. It just says $1 million within seven years to the benefit and/or of underprivileged and/or handicapped children within the community, which may emphasize creating a cultural educational opportunity. So I think the ordinance is pretty good.
I do think the thing that we were trying to focus on, and maybe pick the bad example, I don't know, was that the balance between programmatic and bricks and mortar. And that wasn't real clear. And I wanted to make sure it was clear, that it could be used for either. And Mr. Regal's okay with that.
But, well, I mean, programing is a setting of programs, yes, as in paying wages.
Right, I understand that. And that's, we've got that on the record, so I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I think everybody's...
That's just what the trust says, why I got by with it.
Sure. Understood.
Everybody's intention is good, and I think the spirit will come through.
While we're splitting hairs with language, can we say youth with disabilities?
We are just repeating the trust language with the handicapped children reference.
I gotcha.
I think I'm accurate with that.
Okay, yeah, we're just a little bit more modern in how we refer to individuals and their individuals first, and thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so do we need to change, amend this in any way to reflect the changes of what you're going to add?
What we can do is just attach it as an exhibit, and so that doesn't require any kind of provision.
Doesn't change the language of the ordinance.
No.
Okay. And, any other questions? Everybody speak their piece?
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Regal.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Ordinance 07-16.
I'm amending the annual appropriations for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2016. Need an introduction?
Can I get an introduction?
I'll introduce it.
Angel?
Good evening, members of council. This ordinance in front of you for consideration at our next council meeting is really just a routine piece of legislation that we bring forward at multiple points during the year. It amends our annual 2016 appropriations to take into account different expenditures. So the majority of these relate to appropriating funds within our TIF funds that are used to pay the debt service on debt that we have issued in the past. So that comprises the majority of this document. Additionally, because at the beginning of the year, we do not appropriate TIF dollars, as construction contracts come through throughout the course of the year, we follow up with then an appropriation amendment to appropriate those funds in those accounts. Additionally, as time goes on, you get accounts that you had funds carried over from prior years, and it came in a little bit higher than expected. So really, these are, in a couple of these cases, are just cleanup accounts. So with that, I will answer any questions that you have, but we will also ask for a second reading at your next meeting.
Questions from council?
Angel, if we could, just maybe for Christine and I's benefit of putting a little bit more backdrop on some of these numbers of what they really represent. I am not familiar with this process, and it very well may be housekeeping, but I'd like to know a little bit about the house that we're keeping. So if, for the second reading, if we could have some more of the backdrop information in terms of, you know, what's left, you know, what the subsequent steps would have to be once we do this? If it's a TIF appropriation, are we satisfying the TIF, or, you know, where are we in those?
Sure. If I could just add on, because perhaps it might provide some further clarification. These projects that have to do with our TIFs have, I would say, for the most part, been vetted out as part of our capital improvement program. So, for example, if you see funding for a TIF coming through for design, for example, there was work in here for a shared use path for the Smiley Park. That was part of our 2016 capital improvement program. We just, when we put forward the 2016 appropriations, we always leave out the TIF funds, and there's a lot of accounting reasons why we do that. We're going to take a look at that in the future to see if we can change that up a bit. So, but I can certainly follow up within this to just point to the projects within the CIP and the funding that was laid out there.
For example, reforestation, 130,000...
Sure.
Where are we reforesting? Is there a certain, is that a project? Is that 10 projects? Is that spread across the city? And I don't ask for you to answer those things now, but maybe when we have it, to just give us a better idea of, you know, what the ultimate end is.
Absolutely.
I get that we're going to plant trees or shrubs or something.
Right.
I'd kind of like to know where.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will have a second reading with that additional information on March 7th. Ordinance 08-16.
Authorizing the provision of certain incentives to Smiths Medical ASD, Inc., to induce it to retain an office and its associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it. Jeremiah?
Deputy Mayor, members of council, before you is a economic development agreement for your consideration with Smiths Medical Shared Services Group that is currently located at 5200 Upper Metro and a metro office district. The economic development retention grant provides for a one-time $30,000 retention grant payment to the company for its retention of 131 jobs and approximately $154,000 in annual payroll withholdings. Requirement is the company must execute a lease through at least '20, '21 for this incentive to be executed, and the city estimates it will net approximately $771,000 over the term of this agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. We will have a second reading and public comment. With that in mind, are there any questions from council?
I have a quick one. You talk in your staff report about they have some additional lease space outside of Dublin. I'm assuming we're trying to bring those jobs here.
Actually, they were considering leasing additional space outside of Dublin. So they do have a manufacturing facility on Shire Rings Road.
Right.
And they have multiple facilities, and they were, I see the first sentence, or second sentence, I'm sorry, yes. So to be clear, they were considering options outside of the city of Dublin.
I gotcha, okay.
So some other circumstances surrounding the location that we're at required them to actually open up their search for potential new office space, and that's how we were engaged and how we got till today.
Perfect. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we'll see you on March 7th.
Thank you.
Ordinance 09-16.
Adopting and enacting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Dublin, Ohio.
I'll introduce it.
Thanks, Tim. Jennifer?
Good evening, council. American Legal Publishing has completed the current supplement to the Dublin codified ordinances. This includes all ordinances enacted subsequent to the adoption of the prior supplement. American Legal has recommended revisions to the code, which are tied to Ohio revised code references as well. Staff requests that council dispense with public hearings so that this update is effective immediately. Under Charter Section 4.04a5, this recodification legislation is effective upon passage. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council?
Jennifer, can you give us any idea of what these changes are, if we're going to make them effective immediately?
Right. So these are just housekeeping, references to revised code sections that have changed, updates, technical revisions to the code.
So there are zero substantive changes?
They're, well, they're...
Well, it brings into, it brings all of the things you passed in the last six months into the code, the codified ordinances.
Yeah, so the technical, there are references to the revised code that changed, but this just puts into this document all of the legislation that you've actually passed.
And stuff that we're subject to.
So besides the references, there would be nothing substantive that this changes.
Very good, thank you.
So the tax changes that took place, I mean, any tax would be part of this that we're subject to because of the state legislature?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to dispense with a public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Anne?
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Okay, now, the resolutions, let's double back into Resolution 08-16, which was removed from the consent agenda.
So resolution accepting the lowest and best bid for the John Shields Parkway Phase Two project. The introduction.
Mike? Dana, do you want to comment on it, or?
Sure, I could tee this up. This is the bid relative to John Shields Parkway Phase, next phase of John Shields Parkway, Phase Two. The underground work is significantly done. This is the new roadway to be built. It'll be built to the specification of the Bridge Street District Streetscape Study, which you previously approved back in 2014. There's a staff report that speaks to some more of the background, and there's a map that shows you the location of it. The bid, successful bid, was Savco and Sons, correct? Yes. And came in at 7.7 million. The estimate was at 8.6. Anne, be happy to answer any questions.
Chris?
I had just a few questions, and I will confess, since I got the packet, well, Friday morning effectively, I didn't have a chance to go over all the documents in the room. I appreciate that they're there, but I had a few questions, really just moving forward in our budgeting thinking. So this is Phase Two, so Phase One is largely complete. How are we, per linear foot, budget-wise, where we were on Phase One, where there are significant changes on Phase Two? Now, I realize that topography is different, but you have the site conditions as a separate line item, and then you have the construction of the roadway as a particular line item. How are we relative to price per linear foot from the original Phase One? Did they come in actually close to what we had projected? What I'm looking for is our overall long-term projections of the cost of these roadway networks. Are we, now that we have one under our belt, are we close to where we thought we were going to be?
Mandy Bishop, I think, is there. She'll answer that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are actually below estimates that we received on John Shields Parkway Phase One. We're around $3,800 a lineal foot for John Shields Parkway Phase One. It's about a 350-foot-long roadway, so very small space, very small project. As we've moved into Riverside Drive and John Shields Parkway Phase Two, we're seeing estimates below our CIP estimate per lineal foot. I have not run the numbers, but 7.7 million divided by 3,100 lineal feet will give me that per lineal foot cost pretty quickly, so I can follow up with that number, that calculation, but we are definitely below what we projected.
Okay. When the Phase One was being constructed, I had opportunity to pass by and saw the tree pits and so forth that were being installed, and I had some communication with Mr. Reiner back in April, April 20th of 2015. You know, part of the character of Bridge Street is the streetscape. Really, the most critical component is the streetscape. It did not appear that the tree pits were being constructed in such a fashion that a tree could reach ultimate maturity, by that I think these particular wells had sycamores going in them, or London plane trees, perhaps. And it didn't appear that there was enough substantive material for the tree pits to happen to produce the canopy that we were looking for long-term in the area. Have any of those changed on Phase Two, or are we still constructing them consistent with the way we did in Phase One?
They're consistent with the way we did it in Phase One. What we have revised is how we inspect those tree pits. The details are the same, and what you're seeing, I do recall the issue, is the pedestal that we set the tree on, and then the excavation goes down from there. So we've paid more attention to that, during inspections, and making sure the pedestal gets set and that the tree depths, that pit depths are excavated to the appropriate depth.
But we don't have any structural soil or anything continuing under the adjacent asphalt or sidewalks?
No, we have structural soil underneath the, in between the planters. It's 30-inch depth underneath the planters in the John Shields Parkway Phase Two design.
But only contained within the planter?
No, outside of the planter. We have planting soil in the planters, and then we have structural soil under the adjacent hard surface between the planters to facilitate the tree root growth.
Okay. Are you talking in a linear fashion along the...
Yes, I'm talking in a linear fashion along...
So they would be consistent with the width of the planter itself?
Correct.
And the length would then run from planter to planter?
Correct.
Chris, that question came up, City Council, early on in the discussion of the Parkway, and it was addressed by the city manager and the staff to be taken care of.
I remember the dialogue coming forward last spring, and had staff followed up on that alignment with that.
We did.
I'm not sure if...
And it's really important, because the High State's done a study on that, and you need an eight-foot-by-eight-foot planter, or you need the linear design, I think you were talking about, to make sure the trees can grow to their fullest extent.
Correct.
They've done a lot of studies on that, and I just met with a campus landscape architect who's had years of failure down there on High Street and all over that campus, and we had lunch discussing that very issue, so.
I'm wondering if...
I hope we're going to reach success with this.
Well, as Ms. Amros Grooms alluded to, this is part of, you know, when we look at the mature, the renderings of the mature streetscape, this is where the magic happens, is with the trees. And I had a long conversation with Joanne Shelley about this very issue, when you raised it and John raised it, and I don't remember if we got a memo, or if it was just in this conversation, but I'm wondering if...
There was a follow-up memo.
Yeah, if maybe we could provide that to our newest members, and then, you know, Mr. Reiner and Ms. Grooms, since you're in the business, if you could review that, perhaps, you know?
Absolutely.
I think that would be helpful.
I'd be interested in the inspection process of that, too, because I didn't see all of that there. And we, you know, we're paying $3,800 a linear foot to construct a road, and if we don't have a tree canopy that covers it, we will have missed the mark at the end of the day.
I think that when that was brought to our attention, there was an inspection issue. And I think what we've done as a result of that is looked, relooked the soil structural mix, the soil mix, how it's laid out. We also are responding to the issue of the inspection, which we appreciated that being brought to our attention, and I know that's the way ahead as a result of that. Is that correct?
Correct. And the structural soil is not installed in John Shields Parkway Phase One between the planter beds, which is what you alluded to.
Yeah, I was there. It's not there.
Correct.
So we need to do better, because $3,800 a linear foot for streets that aren't going to have a tree canopy is not what we want to do.
I think the good thing is we had that Phase One, which was a pretty short section. Lessons learned before we got on to much longer stretches of this and taking those things that were brought to our attention and improving the process going forward. So, and obviously, you know, if there's other things like that with expertise, we certainly welcome it and adapt accordingly.
I'll visit, I promise.
I'm sure. I'll be out there with you.
I'd like to clarify the $3,800 a foot. Those streets have a lot of special finishes and such, do they not?
Special finishes.
Well, I mean, we have curbs.
We have granite curb.
Granite curbs.
Granite curbs.
Granite curbing for the planters. We have brick pavers.
Agreed. I, but I don't wanna leave the, the, the residents with the impression that watch this that we're paying $3,800 a foot for an asphalt street, so.
Right, and the thing I would remind everyone of is the maintenance cost on the back end. We did the analysis to show, and analysis is the payback and the return on investment for maintenance is there, so.
I, I'm not addressing those. I, I'm just wanting to address the tree issues, so.
I understand, but using 3,800, uh, a lineal foot over several times, it may be misinterpreted out there, that's all.
Good point.
Anything else? I lost where we are. Ann?
Uh, Ms. Aludo? Ms. Aludo, sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Thank you. Uh, Resolution 11 dash 16, Ann?
Intend to appropriate a 0.736 acre, more or less, be simple right-of-way, of which .420 acres is within present road occupied, uh, 0.135 acre, more or less permanent utility easement, and a 0.034 acre, more or less temporary construction easement from Alexis El Gasetto from property at 6789 Rings Road for public purpose of roadway construction.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, who's handling this? This says Jennifer.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna handle all the engineering questions.
All right.
Yeah, that's really pretty. Good evening, council. These appropriations are necessary as a result of the construction of the roundabout, the intersection of Rings Road and Churchman Road, and relocation of a Columbia Gas mainline along Rings Road. We hope to reach an amicable agreement with the owner, but this resolution authorizes us to begin the appropriation process. The appraised value is $14,250, and if Barb has anything you wanna add?
She's shaking her head vehemently.
We're happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Hearing none? Ann?
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 12 dash 16, Ann?
Supporting House Bill 277 to eliminate double taxation in the Delaware and Union County portions of the city of Dublin.
Dana?
Good evening again.
I'll introduce it. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. That's right.
Good evening again, thank you. Uh, not something we do very often, uh, bring, uh, resolutions forward in support of legislation at the state level, uh, something you may see more of as a result of the Central Ohio Mayor's Managers Association, which I briefed you about, coming together and focusing in on legislative matters. But I also wanna recognize, uh, Washington Township trustee Denise King, who brought this to, to our attention, and, uh, Bob Fathman, who's also, uh, a resident who's been actively involved with this. I appreciate their, their assistance and awareness of this. Uh, essentially what this is, is that Delaware County Auditor, uh, had not been applying the 911 levy, uh, to portions of, uh, the city that lies in Delaware County. Um, as a result of that, um, the reality of it is, the way the cer, the statute's written today is that they were required to do that. So, the Delaware County Auditor has taken that, uh, to, to the state level with the support of State Representative Andrew Brenner, to try to change the application of these levies, uh, within counties. In other words, the state, uh, law, if it's changed as written and as passed by the House, uh, at this point, would, uh, enable counties to only charge, uh, the 911s, for the 911 levy where it applies. Uh, in the case of, uh, Dubliners who live in Union County, that tax is being applied, even though, uh, that is paid for by cit, through, through city funds, and so, uh, what we're doing is asking you to support, uh, this effort, um, that, uh, Representative Brenner has taken to the House. As the, um, uh, the memo points out, it, it has passed, uh, the local government committee in the House, 11-0. Uh, it is going to go to the Senate. Uh, we'll see if the Senate gets behind this or not. All indications are that it, that it will, um, and depending on recesses and so forth this spring and into the summer, um, will obviously affect the passage of this bill. Uh, we think that, um, it could be passed as soon as June, um, barring any unforeseen obstacles in its way, and there are none at this time, and, uh, should it pass by June, the governor would sign in about 90 days. The do thing, the thing that I do, do wanna point out is that while the state statute may change and reflect this, that doesn't, that still puts it in the court of the county as to whether they'll apply it or not. So, as the way, uh, per the way it's written today, if it were passed, uh, we would need to do follow-up effort with Union County and Delaware to make sure that that double taxation doesn't happen. It just loosens up the way that that's applied, um, compared to the current law. So, uh, I don't know, Jay Somerville's here. I know he's been active in, in the Communications Association for the state. Jay, if there's anything, I think he was, if there's anything you wanna add to that, feel free to do that, but I think that pretty much-
I was out at the township meeting, and Denise brought this to my attention. Sarah's here, the, this evening. If you could just pass along our appreciation to them for raising the issue. I know they've been supportive of this. It seems to me to fall in that kind of unusual category of a no-brainer.
Yeah.
So, I, it, it seems to be trying to fix a bad idea as opposed to, um, necessarily propose anything novel. Anybody have any other questions?
No, I just wanna thank Bob Fathman for his work on this, for taxation without services. I mean, they've all worked hard as a group to have this thing changed, so kudos to the whole team.
Ann?
Yep. I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Jay Somerville as well. He, um, he did a nice job at the Ohio Collaborative the other day, speaking to that, that group on, uh, on the police issues that we're dealing with up there. Appreciate your leadership there and stepping forward.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Mayor, if I, if I may, I would like to add that we, we have, uh, notified Union County Commissioners, Union County Auditor, as well as Delaware Commissioners, Delaware County Auditor of our position on this, so they're aware of it, and I've had good dialogue with them.
Yeah. Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Uh, Resolution 13 dash 16?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Rev One Ventures, formerly known as Tech Columbus.
Introduce it.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, Colleen?
Good evening, members of council. Uh, for your consideration, tonight is an agreement with Rev One Ventures, which is formerly Tech Columbus. Uh, this agreement represents a continuation of services provided by Rev One, focused on new company, technology, and job creation in exchange for the city providing matching funds for the Third Frontier Program. Uh, the proposed agreement for 2016 is consistent with previous agreements, uh, approved by city council, and it provides for the continuation of services by Rev One, uh, which includes, uh, their participation in the Dublin Entrepreneurial Center, uh, through staff members and having an office presence, uh, to facilitate and promote networks among entrepreneurs and technology in the startup community in Dublin, uh, market and communicate to promote their services, uh, provide access to entrepreneurs and residents, and training, uh, et cetera. Uh, tonight, we have CEO and President Tom Walker from Rev One Ventures, who is here this evening, and, uh, we can answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mr. Walker, welcome.
Good evening, members of council. My pleasure to be here. Um, your, your continued commitment of Rev One allows us to support the startup of, uh, new entrepreneurial ventures in the region. Um, remind you, we serve a 15-county region, but 90 to 95% of our deal flow comes from, really, the Dublin and city of Columbus areas, so, uh, Dublin is a true leader, um, in, in the startups. It's just some of the metrics that we, uh, provide the, the city are, um, we really focus on the amount of capital that are attracted by these startups to the region, so as you know, we don't have a lot of organized venture capital in, in central Ohio. Um, so, our companies have attracted nearly 63 million in venture capital at this point. Um, the leverage on the, the Dublin investment is roughly 39 to 1 on the capital alone. Those companies have nearly 50 million in revenue today, so when you add just those two capital pieces, uh, you're looking at 62 to 1 leverage, which is very significant. And so, when we compare these stats to other, uh, communities in the region, you are a true leader. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council, for Mr. Walker or Colleen?
I'm just so sorry you had to sit here this long.
It's been absolutely fascinating, so.
I probably am one of the culprits that took a lot of your time, and I wanna apologize.
That's just fine.
Can, can you remind me, we, our other suburban neighbors are participating in, in this kind of, uh, this venture as well?
They are. We have seven community partners.
Right.
Um, and so, that includes Franklin County, uh, city of Columbus, and Dublin, so those are our, our three key. Then, um, New Albany, uh, you're gonna put me on the spot here, so Grove City, uh, Westerville, and Upper Arlington.
Good. We had a discussion at some point in the past about Marysville, Union County, were they, are they participating with the same group, or is that a separate tech group?
They, they are not. Um, we, we, um, provide outreach into those communities, um, same with, uh, Del, city of Delaware, um, but they are, they are not cash participants at this point.
Okay, thank you.
I, I, I just wanted, um, can, can you reveal the identity of the angel investor that contributed $5.8 million?
That is not a single angel investor. That, that, that should read, um, individual angels, so.
Okay.
So, we, what we track the difference between angel groups, because, as you may know, in central Ohio, we have one of the largest and best angel groups in the country, which is the Rev One program, uh, the Ohio Tech Angel Fund, but we also track individual angel investments into companies, so that $5 million figure would be, you know, 75-plus angels.
Got it. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Are they doing any of the tax deals that they used to do, that they would defer? The, 'cause I, I remember doing some of those back in the, probably five years ago?
Yeah, that, that was an excellent program.
It's a really good program, 'cause it encourages other people to put some cash into those deals.
It does, but all of the tax, those went away with all the, uh, moratorium on tax credits.
I see.
So, something we keep track of, you know, maybe someday in the future.
Okay. Anything else? Ann?
Uh, Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Amaro's Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
And Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Staff comments, Dana?
Uh, just a couple items. Uh, we're gonna put this on your calendar, but I thought I'd go ahead and give you a heads-up, 'cause this date was just set today, March 29th, at noon at the Service Center, will be the so, Snow Season Celebration, it's appreciation luncheon for the employees of Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Fleet, so if you wanna put that on your calendar, but we'll make sure you're aware of that. Uh, there'll be a-
You said that was March 29th at noon?
March 29th at noon, yes, sir. Uh, there will be a, a mid-century neighborhood street and sidewalk improvement project update. That's at Thomas Elementary School, and on, on Tuttle Road for the evening of Tuesday, April 12th, 6:30 to 8:30, 8 o'clock PM. Uh, there's also mention of the retaining wall construction on North High Street and the restriction to, to one lane there between hours of 9:00 to 4:00 for several weeks as that occurs. And then I'm really proud to announce, um, the re-accreditation of our Public Works Department. As you know, uh, we're very fortunate, I think, that you support, as council, accreditation of our police division, our Parks and Rec, our police department, Parks and Recreation Department, as well as our Public Works Department. So, the, um, American Public Works Association, uh, did send us a letter, which is in your packet, uh, stating that we did pass the re-accreditation for the Public Works Department. Uh, we achieved Parks and Recreation re-accreditation this last year, as well as police, so very proud of everybody and their involvement with that, and that's a great validation of how we do business, and several of the standards and operations and procedures that we use are now being held as a, as a national model, as a result of this last inspection, and, uh, just very proud of the staff for all that they've done with that. Last thing I will announce is that, um, Megan O'Callahan and her husband are the proud parents of a new baby boy named Jack as of today, so I just thought you might, didn't get a chance to get that out to you today, so I thought I'd just make you aware of that. And barring any questions you may, I don't know, um, Councilmember Keenan, if you want me to touch on the retreat, or did you wanna do that, or have you already covered that?
It's the 10th and 11th.
We're finalizing the, uh, the, the agenda. A couple members haven't had a chance to go through it. There may be a few minor tweaks, depending on what feedback we get back.
Okay, great.
And I know that, uh, Councilmember Grooms was interested in having, at some juncture in that agenda, a, a topic, just to kinda cover, uh, other topics, kind of an other miscellaneous topic.
Okay.
And it looked to me like it'd be that late morning, uh, where we're talking about, what are we talking about?
Public meetings, open records, public meetings.
Open records, thank you, yes.
Okay.
'Cause that shouldn't take a, a lot of time.
Okay.
I, I would hope that that would not take, I'm assuming with our new members, they had their onboarding, that that would've been covered, and then those of us who have been here for years are really, I mean, I feel like I'm really well-aware of what's an open meeting and what's a public record and-
If you feel comfortable that there's nothing that needs to be said about that or brought up anymore, we can certainly replace that with something else.
I've been through the training, so.
Yeah, we did go over open meetings and the new member training.
Yeah, that's okay with me.
I'm just thinking, you know, this is our, our precious-
There's a Supreme Court, uh, pending decision that could have some impact. You might, you could touch on that for 10 minutes or whatever, but-
Right, yeah, I, I-
That's, Tim, that's something, I see you-
This agenda has a lot of float in it, to give us time for, in case things run over and back, and we can condense things and expand things, so, but if there's additional topics that you wanna add, we'll certainly, uh, work with the chairman to-
Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to you this week. Uh, we'll get feedback from everybody in the next few days, I would imagine, so that we can finalize it, 'cause we know, I know we have to get to Julie Novak as well, uh, if there's any content there that needs to be adjusted.
Right.
Dana, I have one question about the North High Street widening. How much wider will North High Street get there?
I don't know. Did Mandy leave? She's my, she's my lifeline, or Barb, if you recall. I don't, I don't recall, if you-
The widening project will actually take place just north of North Street and will, um, build a left-hand turn lane into the building Z that, um, is the, I guess, Bridge Street West.
Left turn from the north?
Well, it's southbound left-hand turn lane into that new building, um, so like their northern entrance into the parking garage, so it's widening out in order to accommodate that left-hand turn lane.
So, remind me, isn't there a road that's going to come around somehow and, and beacon, uh, adjacent to or hook into Indian Run? Does that happen somewhere?
That, that's correct.
Yeah, that's the North River View Street.
Yeah, 'cause we talked to the Indian Run residents about that last fall.
Correct.
The, the issues of intersection and, um, full movement and so forth are still being designed and talked about. The timing of that as well is something that we'll probably bring to you, or suggest or mention to you, or give you an update on as part of your retreat, or, uh, as part of a workshop after that, but we've got several things-
They're very anxious to know what's happening over there, so.
Correct, yeah, we've got some updating to do. We've got, we're, a lot of design going on and, and a lot of sequencing issues relative to bridge and all the other things, so.
Good.
Couple of follow-up questions on that. Um, so, the, the widening is really to accommodate a turn lane into the development, is that correct?
Correct.
Um, and is that part of the economic development agreement with the developer, or?
I believe it is, yes.
They would pay for that?
It is.
Okay, so the city's paying for that?
Correct.
And that was passed?
7-0.
Several months ago?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I was looking for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff?
I have nothing else.
Good. You sure?
Are we adjourning?
No.
Oh, okay.
We still got two more pages to go. Uh, committee reports.
I have a couple questions, but I'll wait for my turn.
Okay.
Uh, committee reports. P and Z, Amy?
Um, we did, uh, the final development plan, and I'm always, I'm bad at these Bridge Street things, but in any case, we approved Block A of Bridge Park East on Thursday evening. That was cited, sort of the big, the big deal of the evening, as well as master signed plan for Bridge Park East.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
It is.
Mike, Administrative Committee?
So as we just said, we have the retreat on the 10th and the 11th, and you get back to me with any issues there. And you've noted here on our, on our agenda that the Wednesday, March 3rd date for board commission candidate interviews, the calendar looks like Wednesday is the second.
Do I? I'm sorry.
So it is the second. We also, you raised an issue earlier about the boards and commissions because of the timing. We may want to consider the reappointments that we talked about. These interviews are for two or three specific slots. The rest of them, I think we've all agreed that we're going to reappoint. If we're going to do that, we probably need to do it sooner on the March 2nd meeting?
The March 7th? It's related to the March 21st meeting and whether that or not that goes forward.
Right, but we have P&amp;Z meeting after the, after the, is it the March?
It's prior to the April 11th meeting of council, so.
So when do we need to do, if we don't have the 21st--
If you don't meet on the 21st--
We need to do it on the 7th.
Yes, right.
So just be aware, if anybody has any issues with that, we need to, you know, we need to make those appointments if we're not going to have a meeting on the 21st, which it looks like we may not have a quorum because of spring break. Is that your understanding?
No.
Anybody else? We have to come up with a date for the reviews for the city manager and for the clerk, and you are going to send that around. Everybody knows they need to respond to you, so we can get a date and time together. We're going to need about two hours, probably two and a half hours, to accomplish that task. And that's all I have on the admin.
What about this?
We need to change our August meeting date.
Change the schedule.
Oh.
August meeting, regular meeting on Wednesday, August 10th instead of on Monday, August 8th.
And you can wait if you want to--
Well, that's the Irish Festival issue with the tents and everything in the parking lot. Do you want to, I mean, I'll make a motion to change that meeting date if that's what everybody is--
Second to August 10?
Yeah, so there's a motion or the second?
Okay. Ms. Amoros Grooms?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Aludo?
Yes.
Mr. Lucklider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
And Ms. Saleh?
Sure, yes.
Thank you.
Community Development, John?
Just to remind everybody that we are having a meeting Monday, March 14th at 5:30. See you there.
Thanks, John. Finance, Mike?
We just have the quarterly update on Monday, the 11th. Our Finance Committee, the whole meeting on health benefits ought to be interesting on Monday, April 25th. We did have a committee meeting on bed tax, and there's a couple other items. Do you want to, we talked this evening about some other, some of the criteria in particular. Dana, we want to talk about that criteria in terms of some of the selections for the bed tax grants. So maybe we can tee that up. Maybe we even have a few minutes of goal setting or wherever it's most appropriate. Tim, you brought it forward.
Yeah, I mean, it's that criteria, there you are. Angel, you're not that far away, and you've been here all evening. Yeah, I mean, it's, I think maybe we should just review that criteria. I don't, I don't, I don't think that, you know, we've closely analyzed it for maybe two decades. I don't know. You know, certainly not in the 14 years that I've been on council. I don't think it's been revisited. So, you know, maybe at the, at the end of the day, it won't change, you know, but I think that it's worth a look.
Perhaps we can schedule a workshop. I know that there are a lot on the schedule for this first half of the year. We don't hear the bed tax till November, so we could wait till the second half of the year and try to do it either in conjunction with maybe a quarterly update or try to get something brief.
Quarterly update, yeah, that would, yeah, as opposed to another workshop.
I agree. Thanks.
Public Services Committee, Amy?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, Tim?
We have an event Friday morning, a breakfast for newly elected officials. I don't know if anybody from staff is going.
That's the one for newly elected officials, correct?
I believe so.
I don't know if anyone's, are you going to--
Yes, I heard.
Okay. Christina's not, but Chris is, I don't know that anyone from staff is going.
Okay, that's all, that's all with respect to Morpsey.
I can handle it.
Chris is lonely. We'll send someone.
Well, Tim, you're still up for the Logan Union Champagne County Regional Planning Commission? Nothing. U.S. 33 Innovation Corridor Group? You're just going to keep asking me, aren't you?
I am.
We had a meeting on the 12th, I believe it was, at Jerome Township. It was our regular monthly meeting. The consultants were there, and, you know, we're forging ahead toward what we hope is a final recommendation, but we're not there yet. There's been some discussion about getting those consultants before this body for an update. Obviously, that hasn't occurred yet, and we haven't arrived on a date, but when we do, we'll let you know. Dana, if you have anything to add?
Couple things. We may be able to have Jamie Green there at the retreat at the end of the agenda. We have a portion of time for U.S. 33 Corridor, so he may be at that. Have him holding the date. There will be a meeting on March 31st, and that is going to be a joint meeting between the Dublin Chamber of Commerce and the Union County Chamber of Commerce. We'll get this information out. Starts at like 7:30 in the morning. The idea, and the City of Dublin's going to sponsor the breakfast. It's an opportunity to get parties together from the chambers to talk about the vision plan. That just got agreed to over the weekend, so, but we'll get more information about that as well.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Nothing, thank you.
Board of Education, Chris or Christina?
We have not met since our previous council meeting. However, the Dublin Difference, I believe you all received an invitation to that at 6:30 at Jerome on March 1st.
Great.
Is that event, excuse me, is that event an open house type event?
It is. It's a community event. I, truthfully, I have, I don't know if this is a new event for them, but it's certainly not one that I have ever experienced before, so I don't know entirely what to expect, but--
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was equally in the dark, so I guess we'll see when we get there.
The state of the schools is not this year. That's like not an annual, that's sort of a--
Every three years.
Kind of in lieu of that. And that's a wonderful program, and it was, the direction was packed when that goes on. So I'm sure this will be very, just as successful. I haven't had any, gone to any Washington Township meetings. Sarah, anything you want to add for us?
Thank you for your forum.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Council Roundtable, Chris?
A couple things. Our Technology Task Force, have we made any headway on that, or?
We will give you a report at your next council meeting.
Okay, good.
With our recommendations.
Parking in historic Dublin, have you had any further conversations? A meeting with Pat tomorrow?
I saw Pat in here. He came in, Mr. Grable came in for the Community Entertainment District meeting. Told him we'd be getting together to talk to him.
Good, looking forward to that. And one thing just for you, Amy, when you have the opportunity to look at the MAG stuff with planning and zoning, if they could kind of cover their eyes of what cars are in the parking lot today and really try to think about just what could be someday and the iterations that could happen, I would really appreciate that. Thank you. I will. Pass that along.
Christina?
I have--
Is that it, Chris? Were you done?
I'm done, yes.
Christina?
I'm done.
You're done? All right. Mike?
Are we going to clarify this 21st meeting later, whether we're going to have it or not? Do you want to do it tonight?
I think we should do it tonight.
We should do it tonight. So what I understand is we have several, we're very tight on a quorum, whether we have it because of spring break. So Dana, do you have any issues with one way or the other?
We do not, no.
Agenda-wise, you think we'd be relatively light? We can get most of it taken care of in the first meeting in March?
Yeah, I think we'll be fine.
Okay.
Without anything on the horizon that's overly pressing.
With no meeting, we'd--
With no meeting.
So what I'm hearing is we're going to, we're going to eliminate the March 21st meeting. Good.
Other than that, it's my wife's birthday too, so I just, if she's watching tonight.
You'll be a hero.
There you go.
Yeah, tell her what you did. Tell her it's for me.
That's not the reason I suggested that, Ellen.
Is that it, Mike? Amy?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Tim?
Nothing, thanks.
John?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
I unfortunately have a couple of quick things. There was, we had phase two of the heroin epidemic problem last Thursday. It was in the morning, it was very, very well attended. The ACT Coalition was there. I got to tell you, we have, it has to be the finest police chief in the country running our police department. He showed up, and usually in these kinds of environments, the law enforcement is not a very embraced kind of attitude with people that are struggling with these issues. But the chief is stepping in to a void that requires someone to step in, and he's doing it, and he's taking the lead. And although it's a very unfortunate and tragic situation and a problem that a lot of cities are dealing with, just as with most issues that Dublin tackles, we will be on the front edge of innovative solutions. And I'm very proud of you, Chief, for taking that bull by the horns. It is, you just sit and listen to these statistics, and it is just absolutely heartbreakingly tragic. And it is, the problem is here, and Dublin has the courage to recognize it and also do something about it. And Chris was there with me, and there's just amazing story after amazing story about the problem, and now we need to be equally as amazing in our solutions. And I know, Chief, you're working on that, and I really appreciate it. Really appreciate it. I've been getting calls, and I know this is, I know you guys got plenty of stuff on your plate, and this issue has come up in the past. I think we need to put it back on the radar. We have, I think it would be a wise idea to visit this issue of these dying ash trees. I'm hearing more and more people will call me about their neighbor's trees aren't, you know, they are in fact getting more and more dead. And--
Well, that is something.
Yeah, that is something. And they are more and more approaching a condition where the wind's going to blow them over. And a lot of people there, I had breakfast with a neighbor this morning who has removed 50 ash trees from his property, and there are probably plenty of people who don't have the financial wherewithal to do that. And that doesn't make the problem go away. And I've been getting calls from people that say, you know, your zoning code needs to go out and enforce the code. And I don't know that our code really addresses this spot on, does it? I mean, is there, I mean, it's not like a noxious weed kind of thing. And so if you guys could look into it--
It does address dead plant material. Additionally, I think in, along those lines, there, there's legislation, I'm sure Jennifer could speak to it, about registered mail for individuals on adjacent properties and what happens when a dead tree falls.
And the problem, we just got to face it at this point, it's not going away. Every single ash tree that we have is going to be dead, and they all got to come down. And, you know, when you see your neighbor's trees, and maybe they don't have the ability, the financial wherewithal to bring them down, and you see them sort of teetering next to your house, what do you do? I don't, and I don't know what we do. I just think we maybe need to start coming up with, are there cities out there that have legislation that addresses it?
And Jennifer, can you look into that? Because there are remedies to that that exist. We just need to let people know of them.
Yeah, it's a, it's a crazy situation, but we evidently are going to have to deal with it. And I did, Dana brought to my attention-- Excuse me, but I just want to point out that, I mean, there are some of us who are desperately trying to preserve our ash trees through injections, so, you know.
My ash trees.
Please don't curse, please don't curse mine. Understood. And that the city, Arlington Parkway is a good example. I believe all those trees have been treated, and I think there have been some others, city trees, that have been treated.
Yeah, we've done significant effort on that. The other thing I would just add, if there's an immediate safety concern, there may be many, I don't know, but if there are, I know we watch our right-of-ways and the potential of that. Our urban foresters are out there watching that. But if there's an immediate safety situation, make us aware. We'll figure it out.
Right.
That's all I want to say, is we'll figure it out. And I don't know what that means yet, but we'll figure it out.
And I hope residents would know that, call the city and ask for some help in that type of circumstance. We did get a, I don't know whether, Dana, whether it is a proclamation or some type of a recognition by the Ohio Senate for being named the Best Ohio City for Families by Wallet Hub, was sent to us by the President of the Ohio Senate, Keith Faber, and our Senator, Senator Jim Hughes. We thank them for that and compliment and congratulate the city for being recognized as the best Ohio city for families. And then we have the chamber, there's a chamber business climate breakfast.
The economic forecast is tomorrow morning at 7:30 at Dublin Methodist Hospital.
Looking forward to that. I don't have anything else. Anybody else for the good of the order? Okay, we're adjourned.